Oh, yeah. This is great.
Is that counted as?
I have it. I also have what I'm looking for.
Isn't that like the story of our lives? I found there somewhere.
Yeah, I found my key.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. I want to make sure everyone can hear. Okay, great, thanks. Listen, thanks, everyone. This is, I'd like to welcome everybody to our annual joint meeting between the Tennessee Higher Education Commission and the State Board of Education. This is something that we do every year, and it's evidence of our working relationship between these two organizations and how important it is that we do work together for the benefit of our students across the state from K through higher education. So with that, the first order of business will be for our Secretary of the Higher Education Commission to call the wall, please, ma'am.
Chairman Koch.
Here.
Commissioner Dishner. Commissioner Johnston.
Here.
Commissioner Coven.
Here.
Commissioner Moser. Commissioner Stafford.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Witten.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison.
Here.
Secretary Hargett. Commissioner Wharton. Comptroller Wilson.
I'm right here.
Commissioner Lillard. Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. Okay, next, I think the State Board, Vice Chairman Eadie.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here, and we do look forward to this meeting every year as we, as you say, look to see how we can better prepare our students for success, particularly today here at T-CAP. What a beautiful place, and being able to tour Nissin is very special. So at this, I will ask Casey Griffin from our staff to call board to ensure that we have a forum. Mr. Cobbins.
Here.
Mr. Darnell.
Here.
Mr. Eadie.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Tucker.
Here.
Ms. Hartbrook. Mr. Chairman, you have six voting members currently. We have a quorum, and I will now turn it back over to Chairman Koch.
Great, thank you very much. The format of our meeting, as you can probably tell by the setup that we have here, is going to be a question, answer, and discussion. And so really, without further ado, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Victoria Harpohl, who is with the Higher Education Commission.
Good afternoon, thank you. For the minutes today, we've got a group of members that are involved in federal programs.
There's a mic up.
No? Nope? Yes?
Grab that handle.
Good afternoon, Chairman. State Board of Education. So with this today, we have, you know, representatives from the state. To your colleagues, I'm Carol. He gets, uh, it's very smart. Talk to me about a little bit of how what you saw this afternoon on their land actually filters through the lives of students and then was completely here. So, so my job, and he gives a little bit of an idea, let this project get to where it should go.
Good afternoon, pleasure to be here. My name is Belle Delphine. I am Senior Vice President for Education and Workforce Development at Rutherford County Sheriff's. And Rutherford Works is the county's workforce development department of Rutherford County Sheriff's. So I serve as an intermediary for all the work we do at Rutherford County Sheriff's. So we become schools, our community partners, including our district partners.
Good afternoon, I'm Danny Paulwell. I'm Senior Manager of Workforce Learning Pathways here with Nissin. And I'm the Head of Training for US Manufacturing, our three plants in the US. And I'm responsible for training our current workforce, still doing batch current technology, as well as reaching out to the education sector and helping to develop a pipeline of talent in meaningful highway child demand careers manufacturing.
I'm Carol Rier, and I am the Urban President for the Tennessee College of Life Technology here at Rutherford. We do produce this morning's site as well, as well as major exchanges with economy, huge developments. It's not bad to have all of you here today, and I hope you guys talk to some of our students. Not all of them are this, obviously, it is both the higher ed and workforce, so it's a pleasure to be here and welcome you to our meetings.
Olivia, so the person that you all have here is really interesting. How did you get here? Who did you meet there? And how long did it take?
So I think our workforce choose, um, each of those are part of the Chamber of Commerce. Our work and we should deserve your work, sponsored by Popeye's, which is a good one. So our local governments, our county governments, and high industry fund our work to increase and develop our community. Through the existing industries grow, through recruitment of new companies. And about seven years ago, when the trading began, maybe the system was placed on loan itself. So even during recession, we were recruiting jobs, nothing could be scored, but struggled to find, fill those jobs, but it's increasing. So my position was created, and we began a strategy around career technical education as a platform for our talent and community in our communities. And it was really before I even wanted to see pathways or jobs for future and I want to apply. So I eventually said, we're going to pathways, and we thought that was cool, and we'll continue pathways after they're gone because it's still a great thing to do for our students and our communities. So you were, um, you mentioned jobs for teachers. So we were part of the first pathways committees in Tennessee, and we had our job profile, our profile done in 2015. And from that, we determined based on NCADA that they provide, we have five industry sectors that are highest growth, highest wage, high demand opportunities through 2020. So those are the five sectors that we chose to develop some, and then built programs, K through 12, to support those programs in high schools that would be to high wage job and careers.
So sort of going off that, it's just that elementary through high school, how we get an elementary or a middle school or pretty any individual material, like at 18, 20 years old. Interested in CTE? You don't see a lot of CTE workers on television, and there's not a lot of TV shows about welders. How are they exposed to this, and how do you get them excited about it?
Speaking from an employer's point of view, we have to look for certain transferable skills. So currently, the big thing is with the, you know, generation video games, coding, still on coding, more on IT. And so part of my role is to get the current generation interested in what we do and kind of translate those skills. So coding or say video game programming, that skill set's not a lot different from the ladder watching, that we use program robots to program programmable watching control. So we work to get kids interested in that. The big attention point, one of the things that we've done last year, we partnered with Junior Achievement, and we hosted a STEM Summit right here in this building. Over a three-year period, we hosted 955 STEM activities. We put the robot handsets in a hand, and they all worked with robots. And so we just want to expose them to those different skill sets, some competencies, and encourage them.
I understand that anytime that you give your students through this facility, you let them see what's going on, that is a wonderful opportunity. And thanks to Dan and that, we're able to do that a lot. In fact, in the last year, we had almost 30,000 people that came through this facility, this facility alone, to look and see what's going on. And a lot of those were eight, eight-year-olds all the way up to 88-year-olds to see what's happening. Those students enjoy seeing the robots, they enjoy seeing the welding, they enjoy, and you're right, you need a television show about a really cool welder, right? But I think as much as we can expose students to, but also I think as much as we are out talking to let people know about the career options, that there are many things out there that they can do and create, because sometimes they don't understand that. And, you know, so that's something that we can do with the younger generations, just to have them come through, see what's going on. I would have a summer camp here every week if I could, because I think that's a wonderful opportunity. For you asking if I can, I can, and that's all I can do, but we'll all come back and talk about some.
I'm just going to mention something that we created here in Rutherford County to help eighth graders really understand what programs and study they can take advantage of in their respective high schools. It's a different quest on a career fair. So Badger National does a big career fair where they bring industry into the convention center. We don't have open zoning in Rutherford County. So I can't really talk to kids at Black and Middle about opportunities for electronics at Oakman High School because they can't physically get there. So what I keep doing is talk with the students at Black and Middle about all the options they have at Black and High School, including STEM, IT, health science, culinary arts, automotive, all of these different programs that they're interested in. And we create the hybrid of that, where eighth graders get to choose four programs that they're interested in learning about. We bring the high school teachers to the middle school, they bring an industry partner and a couple of their coolest high school students, the class boss or to an eighth grader and a high school senior in Reda, or FFA junior director, or Scruggs from COSA. And they spend 30 minutes learning about that career pathway that they can study in high school. And our superintendent feels confident that that is what we're seeing fruits of in terms of increasing awareness of our career and technical education program. I would tell you that eighth grade is not soon enough. We are, our councils and the leadership from our industry partners are really advocating for intentional advising that begins in sixth grade. We're using Nissin as a part of that, as a part of our tools to help us, but that really doesn't mean to play until it's in ninth grade. We really need to start to, first, say in the third grade, we're saying all these careers. But from a tactical actual implementation, we would obviously something again in sixth grade, where they start to create an E-portfolio of what they learned, their filter experiences, opportunities to go to the T-CAP, to Nissin, to interact with other employers, so it expands their interest in all the other areas.
So you talked, we talked about students, but parents. So how do you engage parents and help them to understand that maybe what they thought a career in manufacturing looked like is not what we think of from years past? Or for the parent that says, my student is university now, we don't, we don't need CTE. How do you address those concerns or questions?
So my pitch now is, we're not focused on college and career opportunities in Rutherford County, we're focused on career opportunities. Because the end goal is a career. The end goal is not college. Your path with every child is a whole very different. Not every child, no, needs to go before university. They all need something past high school, but they do not need before your university degree to walk out that door successfully. They may get it later on as they advance in their career. So this parent piece is going to be a huge part of our overall student plan in Rutherford County. Our Executive Council, which is made up of our industry partners, the leaders of general councils, our post-secondary partners. We have a county commissioner who sits on our executive council. They've been pushing us to figure out how to reach parents. Well, that is one of the hardest audiences to find. So this spring, we actually held parent focus groups in seven, out in all four of our communities, so it was a total of seven events. We had about 50 parents show up. There were intentional invitations from other county schools and other progressive schools, two specific parents that represented a broad cross set of socioeconomic, great band, all of the different dynamics within our school district. And we spent about an hour and a half, we gave them some general data about college going rates, and college completion rates, and college debt. We had industry partners like Dan and our representatives from our five industry councils talk about jobs that they're hiring for their own career pathways, the breadth of careers available in their industries. And then we did some brainstorming with the parents to try to figure out how will we get the right message to parents at the right time? Because what you're trying to talk to a second or third grade parent about is very different than what you're trying to talk to a junior senior parent about. So we followed that up with a parent survey and had about 10% response rate in Rutherford County and other progressive schools. We know that we have hit on a hot button. And out of that, we have created a parent council that will launch this fall to start to figure out how will we start to message through our schools, through civic organizations, through our churches, to reach as many parents as possible about this idea of their awareness. And certainly what Dan's role, through the employer piece, and Carol's role, through the GAC, are also significant.
So another thing for you all, I'm going to ask you this, and then I'll, so I'll give you a second to think about it. What is your, so the experiences that students are having because of this partnership? Tell us what's your favorite story, what's your favorite memory of a student that really was impacted by this?
Not on me.
All right. Good, I'll think.
I mentioned the Junior achievement STEM Summit that we had back in October. And one of the schools had their kids send us some thinking notes. And one in particular stood out to me, it's from a seventh grade girl, it's Delphes. And she wrote, she said, my favorite part of the STEM Summit was operating in robots. Because someone there told me I was good at it, and it made my day. And it's like, wow, we have not only exposed her that this is a competency that can lead to an equal career, but we encouraged her, we built her confidence. And you know what? That wasn't necessarily a Nissan instructor that told her that, because we partnered with Carol's students. And one instructor for work Carol's students, they're the ones that encouraged her. So my working generation encouraged Carol's student generation, who encouraged the rising generation. So that stands out.
Good luck topping that.
Well, in my 50 days that, as the President, um, to me, the most important thing is from students coming in this facility and to hear their stories and just to watch them, watch the energy in their faces, watch their asking all kinds of questions, and their hands going up. Dan does a tremendous job making sure the teachers are here and to see what's going on and sharing. But years ago, I had, my favorite story was, I had a student that came to a time camp that we did, and I had, we had a video, it's an IT camp. And the little boy was about nine years old, and he said, now when I graduate, I'm going to come right back here. And so to hear those students, rather 10 years ago, two weeks ago, to hear them say that this is where they want to come for their education, to prepare them for the workplace, it's the most rewarding feeling in the world. It's why people get out because of the education they're working in every single day. It's the best feeling in the world.
I'm going to take a little bit of different twist on that. So we've hosted a summer internship for our rising juniors for about, this is our fifth summer. We average about 40 students each year, and place everywhere from Nissin, Richland, St. Louis Medical Center, Hurstville, government, Rutherford County government, and abroad, cross-sense of jobs. And two years ago, we launched the teacher internship. So the idea was to help middle school teachers and administrators really initiate a world of work. So they spend two weeks in industry, we just completed that Friday a week ago. And Dan has been gracious to host a group both two, both years. This year, we have also Ingram, St. Louis Medical Center, Calson, Sheldonville, Antrenement Institution, which is building on to St. Thomas, Rutherford. And the impact of that, the ground on our teachers has, and our industry has been overwhelming. So last year, there was a group of educators, three of them are BLA instructors, an administrator, and a senior to Ingram. Our HR manager Ingram is a great sport, and when she lists her list of teachers, she's like, holy cow, what am I going to do with BLA teachers? I've been in manufacturing my whole career, I'm a STEM person, I'm an engineer by trade. So she was a little nervous as to how this is going to work out, but the awe-habited hand is on watching someone on the outside look at their processes. And she, one of the teachers, actually drew out in wonderful stylistic teacher writing, the whole process that Ingram goes through with their delivery. Ingram is now using that as an onboarding tool for all their new assistants of those, so unexpected outcomes. That will then impact our students as those teachers have gone back and shared across their school, all the different careers that are available in Ingram, and all the different pathways that students can take to get to those careers. So that's my favorite story.
Feel free to leave anything and speak your sense.
Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to call on Dr. Emily House with the Higher Education Commission.
I'm already listening. When you had, here's a few things I recognize, Molly will join us today for a recording of this, how are you doing?
20, Mike.
Does that work? So I have with us the Urban Leaders Fellowship. We have fellows here who have been working, some from Nashville, but many from around the country, and with Molly Mear, who's been leading their work. There are 18 of you, are y'all here? If you guys would stand up, I just wanted to, we did this last year, and four members, many of them are members. These guys have been working all summer on policy. They work in the morning with partner organizations, but they work in the afternoons on policy issues that I've asked them to work on. So they've been working on looking at best practices for education savings accounts, on charter authorizer oversight, since that is about to be a new rule of ours, on, this would shock everyone on the board, parent empowerment for parents of students with disabilities and English language learners, on high needs reimbursement for special ed students with, with high costs, and on high-quality teacher practices, recruitment, prep, diversity, all sorts of things around teacher practices. So anything I say that sounds smart tomorrow is going to come from them. So I do have some stuff we're going to raise tomorrow, but I wanted to point out that some of them are here today.
Dr. House.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, members, Chairman, Executive Directors, members. My name is Emily House, I'm the Deputy Executive Director of the Higher Education Commission. I am joined by Amy Owen, who's the Director of Policy and Research for the State Board. We thought we would like to conclude this day the way all good days conclude, with an abundance of data. And we promise to go quickly, and we promise to make it engaging. What we would like to speak about today is really the continuum that students are exposed to when we think about their education experience. Far too often, we think about the K-12 space and the higher education space without recognizing really the continuum that is education. And of course, that extends beyond higher education to adults in the workforce and the learning that they do. So what we would like to do is really focus this around some of our strategic planning initiatives, some of our mission, and then really dive into the data, talking about the experience of particular students as they go through this pipeline. So the impetus for this, as I said, really has to do with one of the goals set forth by the State Board, as well as the mission of the Higher Education Commission, which is this focus on post-secondary attainment, the proportion of students who will have a credential by the year 2020. We spoke earlier about the attainment goal, which has a timeline of 2025, the state's attainment goal. So really thinking about this continuum, how the experience in the K-12 time in a student's life can then impact their higher education experience, and really just in the spirit of us being here together, thinking about how these worlds intersect and how much of a continuum it really is. So if you look at the pipeline slide here, and to the State Board members, I apologize if you have to turn around. As we think about the students who enter ninth grade, who then persist through high school to graduate and then enroll in college, we see, or it's some kind of post-secondary higher education opportunity, we see what that flow looks like. The graduation rate is 80-plus percent, the college-going rate is right around 60%, 63%. So we see as the students start in high school, and acknowledging fully that there are experiences prior to high school that dictate much of this. We think about attainment, we think about reading scores, all of those types of metrics, what that flow really looks like and what that pipeline looks like. As we think of those high school graduates who enter college, you can see the bar chart to the left of the slide there. The majority do enter a four-year institution. Again, this is, I don't think I said it, so not again. This is the class of 2017, the high school graduating class of 17. The majority of these students do enter a four-year institution, but almost half, about 45%, do enter a less than four-year institution. What that really reflects is the diversity of higher education offerings, post-secondary offerings, that we support and encourage in Tennessee, and the diversity therein. So something that really has been very powerful, and many of you have seen this slide before, I did not create it, I completely ripped it off, is what happens to students who do not do anything after high school. And I realize this conversation is so far beyond the workforce, but really focusing on a student's outcomes in the workforce if they do not do anything after high school. And on average, those students do not even make $10,000 a year. This slide is actually an older cohort, I believe that number is now actually closer to 10,000, but really for the purpose of this discussion, I don't think the difference between 9,000 and 10,000 really matters. Students who do not do anything after high school and choose anything in higher education, post-secondary education after high school and enter directly into the workforce, really do not have an opportunity to make a livable wage for themselves and their families. So that really is something that we have to think about. As we think about the K-12 space as well as the higher education space, what is happening to those students who don't fully engage in either of those spaces?
And what we also know is that these outcomes are inequitable across different student groups. It's not that every student is equally likely to be one of the students who does not go on to post-secondary. At the State Board of Education, we have a goal on, on serving all students to work to ensure that they have the support and pathways they need for success. When we talk about this on the K-12 side, we're talking about students with disabilities, English learners, students from historically underserved racial and ethnic subgroups, as well as students who are economically disadvantaged. On the higher education side, THEC is really thinking about different ways to imagine the equity conversation and focus on the outcomes for student subgroups such as first-generation college students, students with different learning needs, students who are veterans or adult students. So throughout this conversation, we're thinking not only about how can we improve outcomes for one group of students, but how can we improve outcomes for different groups of students? So what we would like to do is talk through these three vignettes of students who represent multiple, different counties, different school systems, in each grand division of the state. What I would like to say just at the outset is we are talking on, on average, so I'll put my statistician hat on. Obviously, what we are saying is not the case for every student who is from one of these counties or one of these districts, who is of one of these demographic groups or has a certain socioeconomic status. We are speaking in terms of the average, because everybody knows a student who is very different from the average, and we acknowledge that, but statistically, we're just talking about the data as it relates to the average. So what we would like to do is highlight the experience and the average outcomes for students who meet the descriptions you see on the slide behind you. A student from Lake County who has a low ACT score and is a student of color, is an African-American student, a Metro Nashville high school student, or school student who is economically disadvantaged, is of, is identifies as Hispanic or Latino and is a male student, and a Sullivan County student who is a white female with a disability. So what we will do is talk through some of the K-12 data, I'll allow Amy to do that, and then I'll jump in with some of the post-secondary information for each of these vignettes. And we will go through this quickly, and we welcome questions, of course, as we go through. As we do that, we will then talk about what programs are these students exposed to. So we're thinking about these students and their outcomes, what has the state done, what has the K-12 space and the higher ed space done to develop programs to intervene and support these students as appropriate, some of which I know our board talked about this morning with regard to our master plan.
Thank you. So first, we'll start with our Lake County student, who, as Emily mentioned for our case study, is an African-American female student with a low ACT score. This data is all publicly available on the K-12 side, it's available on our state report card, which currently has 2017, 18 data on it. It will soon be updated for the most recent year. When we look at Lake County schools...
When we look at Lake County schools, almost a quarter of students are on track or mastered in the subject areas of ELA, math and science, which is substantially lower than the state average of forty percent. And when we look at students who are from racial minorities or who are from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, that goes even lower to less than a one in five chance of being academically on track. And you can see that reflected in the average ACT score. One other challenge in that area is a higher-than-average measure of students who are chronically out of school, that students who miss school for any reason, be it excused or unexcused. But research shows that missing more than ten percent of the school days or eighteen days in a 180-day school calendar puts you at risk for significant negative academic outcomes. Despite that, however, ninety-six percent of the students do graduate, which poses the question, as we go from K-12 to higher education, what are the students best prepared to do? Particularly, as Emily will talk about, you have several different options in the area in terms of TCATs, but are students ready to enroll and find success? One way we're trying to bring a focus to that on the K-12 side is through our Ready Graduate Indicator, which looks at whether students have met benchmark ACT score, a high score on the military entrance exam, the ASVAB, if they've taken advanced placement or other dual enrollment and early post-secondary courses. That's an area where Lake County is not too far below the state average, and they're certainly focusing on ways to improve it. However, this is a county that has very low post-secondary attainment rate, and that's reflected in the number of students who then go on to enroll in post-secondary as compared to the state average.
So something that I think is just so fascinating, in a terrible way, about these data is if you look at the high school graduation rate, that is over a ninety-five percent high school graduation rate, yet the seamless enrollment into a higher education opportunity is less than fifty percent. So I think something that's quite telling here and an opportunity for intervention in this county is as we think about students who are graduating from high school, what is happening during that summer, or what is happening within that first year out of high school that the college-going rate is relatively low. It's very low. It's not relatively low, it's very low. When we think about all of this great conversation we've had today related to TCATs, by virtue of where we are sitting and all of the conversation about CTE and the GIV Act and all of that, the students who enroll at the TCAT that is closest to Lake County have very high success rates. You can see that they have an eighty-five percent completion rate and an eighty-five percent in job, in-field job placement rate. I think those numbers would look very similar, in fact, I know they look very similar, for TCATs across the state. And I think when we think of a county like Lake County that has about ten percent educational attainment, the role of a TCAT and the role of higher education that is not someone going to a university and earning a bachelor's degree, which is also very important, to be clear, can be quite transformative when we think about the career and technical opportunities that are provided by an institution like a TCAT. That can really be revolutionary in these areas.
So one initiative we wanted to highlight in this area in particular is our focus on educator preparation, both at the State Board, also at all of our forty ed prep providers, and I know from our higher ed partners as well. One of the institutions that primarily serves this region of Tennessee is UT Martin, and they made some of the highest percentage point gains on the State Board's Educator Preparation Report Card last year that we've seen. So they are moving solidly in the right direction, and we're very impressed, especially their percentage point gains in the T-VAS outcomes of their completers. So people who go to UT Martin to become a teacher, they're having ever stronger positive impacts on their students in the classroom, which, again, they go back and they teach in Northwest Tennessee, so they're serving their student population. You all may have also talked about today, the EPIC grant to help increase the number and provide some incentives for folks to become CTE teachers. CTE in high schools, as we've talked about extensively today, can prepare students for a success at the TCAT level.
And as we think about, again, harkening back to our conversation this morning, how do these students get information about going to college? How does the door to some kind of post-secondary opportunity open to them? My eye goes first to the fourth item on that list, which is Advised Tennessee. Advised Tennessee is a program that is run out of THEC. It is a college coaching, or a high school to college coaching program. In thirty-three high schools across the state, there is a college coach or a college counselor who is an employee of THEC embedded in that school. Lake County Schools does have one of these individuals, and that has been transformative with regard to FAFSA filing in Lake County with regard to the college-going rate in Lake County, which is so important as we think about the low attainment in that area. I'm going to assume, hopefully correctly, that everyone is familiar with Tennessee Promise. Students who meet the profile of this student who is enrolling in a TCAT, that person would have access to Tennessee Promise from a financial aid perspective. An initiative that we began last year at THEC, the Spark Initiative, Supporting Post-Secondary Access in Rural Communities, is very active in this part of the state, increasing CTE opportunities, thinking about equipment needed for these types of courses, and how, if a student is ultimately going to enroll in a TCAT, what can their experience in high school be like to support that and to prepare them for that? And in the very general category of financial support, institutions in this area did receive over the past couple of years, higher education institutions, did receive Tennessee Promise Forward Grants in the past few years to support those students who are Tennessee Promise students through any kind of intervention initiatives, nudging, textbooks, mentoring, advising, whatever that might be localized to that area.
Our next student that we'll discuss would be from Davidson County, and we've described this student as a male who identifies as Hispanic, and we're sharing some similar data here, not all the exact same data points, but enough to give you a taste of what this student's experience might be like. Overall, in Metro Nashville, students who are from racial or ethnic minority backgrounds have, again, about a one in five chance of being on track in terms of their state performance on ELA, math and science exams. What I want to highlight here is that that's not that dissimilar from Lake County, and yet, if you think about Davidson County and Lake County off the top of your head, you might not think of a lot of similarities. So I think that's important when we consider education on a statewide level, that we see similar issues in rural and urban areas, and they might have different root causes, but there's still situations that we have to address. It's not that we can focus on one at the expense of the other. Those rates are a little bit lower for students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds or students who are English learners. Metro Nashville also has a lower Ready Graduate percentage than the statewide average, and a lot of that is concentrated in a few specific neighborhood or magnet high schools. They're about on track in terms of the percentage of students who are CTE concentrators, so taking several courses in an aligned path of study. We'll talk about the Academies of Nashville model in just a moment. I know our board members are familiar with that from a tour we did at a previous board meeting. And they have a slightly lower post-secondary enrollment rate than the rest of the state, which is a little bit surprising when, you may know Nashville's nickname is the Athens of the South. We have all these different post-secondary opportunities, and yet it's a little bit of a struggle to connect students with the opportunity that's right for them.
And very briefly, I would just draw your eye to the second and third lines on the bottom of this table here. The graduation rate of the 2012 entering cohort at Nashville State, which our hypothetical student attends, is only about twenty-two percent, which we can have a whole conversation about ways that we can work to improve that. But if you look at the graduation rate for students who identify as Hispanic or Latino, it is even lower. So we really need to think about the unique needs of all of our student populations and our subpopulations, but really, what can we be doing to serve this particular subgroup of students? Now, I would also draw your eye to the job market placement rate, which looks exceptional, right? So a student, ninety-eight percent of students who graduate from Nashville State are in this indicator here of job market placement. I want to tell you all what that metric is, and I would solicit and invite any kind of feedback following this meeting about a better way for us to do this, because that effectively, using our P20 data system, which is a wonderful, robust data system, translates to, this is a student who is working some kind of job, in their field or not, who makes about $14,000 a year. That is how that metric is calculated. So before anybody is on Twitter and getting all excited about this ninety-eight percent graduation or job market placement rate, there's a conversation we need to have about that. That is not unique to Nashville State. That is not anything reflecting Nashville State. This is just for the sake of example, but there need to be many other ways, I think, that we determine job placement and how we proxy for that with the data we have. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. House, is that figure ninety-eight point three percent of the Hispanic economically disadvantaged students, or is it the whole population?
That's a great clarification. Commissioner Coben was asking whether that ninety-eight percent is of Hispanic economically disadvantaged students from Nashville State? No, it is the overall.
The whole thing.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Yes, ma'am.
So I'd like to highlight two initiatives that we have on the K-12 side, or that primarily touch on the K-12 side. In educator preparation in Middle Tennessee, we have a group known as the Trailblazers Coalition, which is a group of Middle Tennessee education preparation providers, public, private, and alternative certification route, EPPs, gathered together several years ago and continue to meet every quarter to identify ways to increase the percentage of teachers of color in our ed prep candidate pipeline. You may be aware, there's a lot of research coming out on the positive effects of teachers of color, not only for students of color, but also for white students as well. And those are both academic outcomes as well as behavioral and aspirational. Students of color who have at least one teacher of color are more likely to say that they think that they can go to college and be successful there. The Trailblazers Coalition is a wonderful group, and they're more than interested in talking to folks out in East and West Tennessee who might be interested in gathering a similar convening. There's also the Pathways Initiative, which in Nashville takes the form of the Academies Model. Our board members may remember visiting Overton High School about eighteen months ago. They develop at each high school, two or three different academies that students can pursue. And as we heard a moment ago, Metro Nashville schools have open busing, so high school students have more of a selection as to where they'd like to go based on their career interests. When we toured Overton, for example, we saw a really close alliance with St. Thomas for health science programs, and we saw high school students who were able to be earning their CNA certification to become nursing assistants while they were in high school. And I'd like to say that, you know, as a former middle school teacher, I love the GIV Act that's been proposed, the ways to bring CTE down to the middle school level. Kids at that age just light up when they have something that they feel like is relevant and not busy work. And I was a social studies teacher, I will tell you, kids love to argue. And if we could have had something about the legal and government affairs CTE track showing them that, hey, if this is really what you're into, you don't just have to go get a history degree, you can go do something else right away, whether it's in public service, whether it's after college, that there's a career you can make out of this. And I think for a lot of my students, that was not really obvious. It was, okay, well, I go get my four-year BA in history, what do I do next? So very, very excited about the possibility of bringing CTE opportunities to the middle school level.
And the big piece from the higher education side, which is really not solely from the higher education side at all, is the reference here to GEAR Up. GEAR Up is the Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Programs Grant, which is a grant from the U.S. Department of Education. We are, the state of Tennessee is currently on its third GEAR Up grant. We have received three of these grants over the past decade or so. And what that has meant for Metro Nashville schools is a huge investment of over $3 million over that time, and thousands of students serve. So as we think about the access and the information interventions that I alluded to earlier, GEAR Up has really been transformative. From our perspective, I would hope somebody from Metro Nashville Public Schools would say the same in terms of the support that is provided in that regard. We've talked a lot about sales, getting students college-ready with regard to math in particular, while they are still in high school, allowing them to take any kind of learning support, coursework that they need, that will save them some time and get them closer to their degree once entering post-secondary. And something that I think is really cool, again, in this general category of financial support, has been the HBC Summer Bridge, HBCU Summer Bridge support that has been provided to students at TSU, to students at Fisk, American Baptist College, thinking about what those students need to be successful when they graduate from high school and then choose to enter a historically black college in the fall, following that year, their graduation year.
And our final little case study would be, is around a proposed Sullivan County student who's a white female who's a student with a disability. Now, the state actually doesn't disaggregate the white student on-track or mastered percentage in the state report card. So if you can see that the Sullivan County average is thirty-five percent, the average for racial minorities is twenty-seven percent, so obviously for students who are white, it would need to be higher to average it out, but I unfortunately can't provide you with the exact statistic. What's more interesting to see here, which brings back our equity focus from the beginning of this presentation, is that less than thirteen percent of students with disabilities are meeting that mark in this county, which is not too far off from the statewide average, and which I know several of our board members have close personal and professional connections with advocating for and trying to bring this number in closer alignment, because this is really quite an extensive gap. In this county, the ACT average composite is fairly close to the state average, and there's a high percentage of students who are CTE concentrators. So again, students who are taking several courses in an aligned path of study. Completing that aligned path of study can prepare students to be ready for higher education. As we've talked about, CTE does not just mean, it can mean you're going to a TCAT or a community college, and that is wonderful, that is a fantastic career pathway, but it can also set you up through more rigorous course-taking patterns for success in higher education.
And finally, just very quickly, thinking about the state's flagship institution is always kind of an anomaly when we talk about the students who go, in our case, to UT Knoxville versus many of our other universities. But if you look at these documents that were placed at your seat, there is one for each of these counties that will outline for you the number of students from each class in whatever given, the given year on this, who attend some of these institutions. So there are a number of students from Sullivan County who do attend UT Knoxville, and I think what's really interesting here is the difference in the retention, the graduation rates overall, as well as broken down by subgroup, relative to some of the institutions we've featured and relative to some of the more broad conversations we've had about graduation and persistence. So while this is a little bit of an anomaly, it's still, of course, very much part of our environment, our ecosystem, and because of the proximity to Sullivan County, it is quite relevant in this case.
I had the pleasure in April of swinging through several East Tennessee educator preparation providers with our board member, Mr. Darnell. They are all really focused on how they can best serve the student populations that they work with in East Tennessee, some of whom are students who have experienced adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, which might be something like a family member who's been incarcerated, a parent who's going through an unpleasant separation. Specifically, in this area, I know there's many EPPs that are focused on students who've experienced some aspect of the opioid crisis in their homes. Now, we know that that can affect any family in any part of the state, but our EPPs in this region are particularly focused on how they can serve the needs of their students in East Tennessee. So that's something that is not directly career-focused, but it's something that students need to have addressed before they're able to be focused on academics, focused on career, and moving forward. This area is also interested in our early post-secondary opportunities. I know THEC and the Department of Education will be hosting a series of regional convenings this fall around dual enrollment. Dual enrollment being when a student is still in high school but taking courses at a college. There are several logistical issues to sort out there, as well as ways that these relationships can be maximized, so that students are getting the credits that they need at the college level in a way that prepares them for moving toward higher education.
And I know Commissioner Dishner is no longer here with us today, but with regard to community partnerships, I really wanted to shout out the Nice Longer Scholars Program and some of the work that the organization that she leads is doing in this part of the state in Northeast Tennessee, providing support to students in terms of leadership, in terms of opportunity, that is very community-oriented, very rooted in the community in this part of the state, and the phenomenal work they do is something that it's very likely a student from this area would have access to. This area has also been a recipient of the Tennessee Promise Forward Grant, some LEAP Grants, as well as other grants administered by the state. So it is probable, it is possible, that any student in that county, in that area, the one that we have profiled or any others, would have exposure to too much of that. So really, to go back to where we started, education is a continuum. We so often have these conversations in a bifurcated way, and when we do that, we often focus on program. Like, oh, I'll give a presentation about sales, and Amy will then talk about teacher prep, and then I'll talk about Tennessee Promise, and then Amy will talk about EPSOs, whatever it might be. We thought there would be some value today, and just going very quickly, again, talking about on average exposure to programs and outcomes for students in given geographies. I think, as I said this morning, the THEC board members heard me say this this morning, putting together presentations like this just continued to make me so proud of the work that we have done in the short time that I have been in Tennessee, the short time that I have been a THEC staff member, but it really does also emphasize that we have miles to go before we sleep, especially when we think about some of the needs of these subgroups of students along socioeconomic lines, racial lines, whatever subgroup you may be thinking of. Also, the structure of this presentation really did highlight some of the local and regional successes and challenges, and really invited conversation when we were preparing for this, this presentation, about how to expand and how to diffuse these programs to students across the state in ways that are relevant to different pockets of the population. So with that, I don't know if Amy has any other concluding remarks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time. It's been a pleasure to speak with all of you today, and as always, to work with the THEC staff. We think that there's been a tremendous amount of progress in our state and that we can find ways to build on it together. Thank you.
So we welcome any, we welcome any questions or comments from either board, any staff who has questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Shocking that I have the first question. So on the students with disabilities in Sullivan County, I just want to make sure I understand, it was on-track and mastered, is that K-12 TCAT?
It is the umbrella of TCAT assessments, so 3 through 8 in the high school EOCs.
I can't, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it is the umbrella of TCAT assessments, so grades 3 through 8 in the high school EOCs.
Okay, so it's sort of a...
It's a combined composite.
And so I just want to point out and make sure I'm right. So the 14.2% on-track and mastered as a state, I mean, you know, Sullivan County isn't much lower than that, but that 14, these are, these are kids who take the TCAT. These are not the kids who are deemed cognitively, you know, significantly cognitively impaired where they're not able to take, they're taking the ALT test. This is the actual TCAT scores.
I have not dug into the report card business rules in a moment. I'm about 99% certain you're right.
I'm 99.9% certain I'm right. So, and Sarah looks, she thinks I'm right, too, because they're not calculated in the districts either, so, I mean, it's a bigger question, but that's a, that's a problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, other questions? With Advised Tennessee, those 33 hospitals in connection, how are those distributed across the state?
That's a great question. They are distributed across the entire state. On average, it really does kind of average out to be 11 per grand division with a little bit of wiggle room. Those were selected by our college access and success team based on the metrics related to FAFSA filing, college-going rate, distressed counties, all of that was considered when those schools were selected. We originally selected only 30, and we're fortunate to receive some additional funding, added three more, so we increased our service by 10% by adding those three schools, and they are distributed across the state. We do have some information that includes some maps available on the THEC website. I'm happy to get with you offline and point you to that if that would be helpful to you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was actually, hello?
Talk right to the top.
Hello? Hello? Head it on the top.
Hello? I was actually going to ask a question, follow-up with Mr. Coben said, so is there a desire or is there an effort to expand Advised Tennessee?
The short answer is yes, absolutely. We have seen success with regard, as I said, to the FAFSA filing metric, the take-up of financial aid programs, the college-going rate in many of those counties. What we are trying to determine at this point, if there are any counties for whom or any schools for whom this program is no longer the best fit, either because they have, are now on track to be doing things in a way that they don't need the support, or if there's another reason to perhaps reallocate that resource elsewhere. So there are conversations going on related to, in the very early stages, related to anything around reallocating, but in a perfect world, we would, of course, want to expand this promising practice, the way it is being implemented in the most successful sites to other schools across the state. Yes, sir?
I would add, we're in our first recurring funding year, so we kind of had to stay for our stuff over three years, not recurring each year, and really demonstrating, I think the most important, Commissioner Day, was around FAFSA. So you're 14, of course, you're 14% more likely to do a FAFSA in Tennessee if you're in an Advised Tennessee school. Obviously, we'll be watching our college going more closely, but right now, there is a discernible 2% to 3% difference in college going, and that's notable, because by merit of having a toxic seed, you're one of the toughest schools. We're not in Williamson County, right? We're only in the hard counties. And so I think that's been instructive to us as a higher education agency, how difficult the job of school council is, more than anything. And what school counselors have been asked to do, if you think about it, I still see it's really a response to the dysfunction that school counselors are having to deal with. School counselors having to do logistics and test administration, and school counselors not being able to do actually what I think most school counselors join the core to do. So if I still see for us, it's just going to be very, going to be on-the-ground in K-12 schools and try to be supportive and try to really be very, very fine-grained with these students about what going to college looks like.
And we actually talked this morning at our workshop about what we have school counselors doing and have them start looking at where they're spending their time so they can actually do the counseling services.
Right. Other questions? Okay, yes, Mr. Taggert?
Not a question, but just a comment for that point. So in terms of policy practices, I was going to mention this earlier with Rutherford County, but our board is going to hear tomorrow, something that I think is exciting, that our friends and our ed would appreciate knowing about, too. So Rutherford County is going to be the first district coming forward to the board with a recommendation for approval for their teacher prep program, which will be based in the district. So what that means, Rutherford County is going to get into business of free fruit tomorrow, preparing teachers specifically for occupational licenses, which I think is super exciting and something that we'll want to watch and learn with them in terms of how that can spread across the state, because that's going to be, I think, important to the board, which we're about to analyze and variable to both kind of tap the pipeline of high school graduates and remain in the teaching profession for some of those occupational classes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at all? Thank you both very much for the presentation. That concludes our joint meeting, unless anybody has questions or comments that you want to share before, before we adjourn. Once again, it's been a pleasure to be with you and have this joint meeting, and we look forward to continuing to work with you going forward in the future. And adjourn.